All righty. We'll call our meeting board on March 1st, 2021. Board of Commissioners at this time. We'll call on Charles Jordan to give us some indication and then six of Perry to give us the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, who comes today with thanksgiving on our hearts, thanking you for all that you've done for us and now in heaven during this period of our lives where we've had to make so many changes, you have still been with us. And we come to thank you and to praise your name. We thank you that you allowed us to come together and we might talk about the business of Pasquotank County. We thank you all those that assembled. We thank you, dear Lord, and ask that as we talk about the business of Pasquotank County that you will guide and direct our paths and show us what we need to do. We're thankful, dear Lord, for those that are in the healthcare field that are doing so much to take care of patients all around this country. We remember the families there. There were 500,000 people that have lost their lives and we pray that you would comfort them as only you can do. We thank you, dear Lord, for our armed forces, for their protection in our country and they are making a sacrifice and we're thankful for that sacrifice. So we pray that you will bless us and keep us. Amen.
Okay, everyone to the side. Plans to be
To the United States of America And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Tom, you have a presentation on God, you've got a large family here, right? I know you want all to participate, so let's figure out how we do this so it can all participate. All right, this side of all needs, come on up here. I see the black portrait, that's good. All right. Come on this house, my grandkids and all of them, your sisters and all of them. Glad to have you here. That's a lot of stuff.
You guys can come on with us.
Maryam, you have to go, you have to go.
She wants pictures.
She wants pictures. Thank you. Roll that screen up, please, Lynn.
Yes.
Is it just a picture?
No.
I'm gonna make this work out. Hold on, let's get that screen up a little bit. There you go. That should be a little better. Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Here we go. Resolution in honor of Frankie Meads. Board of Commissioners of Pasquotank County and the citizens lost a dedicated public servant with the untimely death of Commissioner Frankie Meads on January 13th, 2020. Whereas Commissioner Meads consecrately served as a county commissioner since December 2012 and has shown the spirit of public service by representing the board and citizens of the county on numerous local and regional advisory boards and whereas Commissioner Meads were diligent to improve the quality of life of his fellow citizens in numerous capacities while giving special attention to reducing death. That's fitting, isn't it? Whereas Commissioner Meads served on the EMS board, solid waste landfill committee, animal control board, R C and D, S B C A board, and the North Carolina Building Council. And whereas Commissioner Meads contributions as a God-serving, thoughtful, hard-working, and generous person extend far beyond his service as commissioner and now therefore be it resolved that the Pasquotank Board of Commissioners hereby honors Commissioner Meads for the life of outstanding service and extraordinary contributions to Pasquotank County. Further be resolved by the Pasquotank County Board of Commissioners that it hereby expresses gratitude to his family, members, and having shared so much of his life for the benefit of the people of Pasquotank County. Be it further resolved that this resolution adopted on the 1st of March, 2021, shall be entered into the minutes of the Pasquotank County Board of Commissioners and a copy presented to the family of Commissioner Meads. Boyd Griffin, Pasquotank County Board of Commissioners, attest about that Scott. Anything to say? This man. So I think we have cousins, sisters, daughters, family, granddaughters, little grandchildren. Yeah. Tom, do you have anything to say?
Just to thank the offer.
All right. So any of the Board of Commissioners would like to add to this? Let's talk with Bill Stare. Test you, Bill. You got anything to say about Frankie?
What's the question?
Do you have anything to say about Frankie or comment?
No. The top person, he and I talked on the phone an awful lot over a third of the time that he was a commissioner while I was and he was an ally. And he was for all of you. Republicans, Democrats, independents, it didn't make any difference. And he, he's just an outstanding individual in the community and in his home. And I was invited to his home to a get-together more than once, but the first time I went out there and I saw all these cars and I saw about 150 people and I said, I don't know if I'll be able to find a place. Here's Frankie standing there in front of his house in the driveway. Now, I don't know how long he was standing there. He saved a place for me to park.
There you go.
Come on in. And that's the way he treated everyone. Just an outstanding person.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, Frankie was a great guy. One of the reasons that I'm here today and certainly taught me a lot.
All right, Mr. Perry.
I could talk a long time about him. When I first met him, I didn't know him very well, but I, being in the community a long time, I've heard people say a lot of very unusual things about him. When I say that, I mean good things. I was told by one person that he just drove the truck home in order to help the person be able to finance and lumber to build a house. I talked to a young lady that had worked with him, her mom had worked with him, and she said to me, she said, I miss him so much because he helped my mom ever so much. I don't know her mom, but it was all very accommodating. And the other thing, I got to know him well enough for him to bring two buckets of water to my house. And I don't know what, many of you know how hard it is to crack water, but I know he had to think I had a lot of love to want two buckets of water. But anyway, he was a great man and I think that we were missing, we were missing from what he's done on this board because he kept us in line all the time financially and he had a lot of information, always prepared. Thank you.
Barry?
Well, just briefly, I had mentioned before to many of you Frankie and my dad were best friends growing up, so I got to hear a lot of stories. And in fact, he was in a lot of the stories too. I'll tell you some of my truths. But just a legacy, you can tell by just the family that's here, and this is, believe me, this is just a little piece of his family. It was again, when I would brag about my kids and I was so excited about them, he always trumped me. He'd say, how many kids you got? Barry, I said, three. He said, yeah, I got six. And that was it. He always got me. So just a great, great man.
Thank you. Charles?
It was always a great pleasure working with Frankie. And he was really concerned about the residents of Pasquotank County. And you can be assured that he watched the finances of Pasquotank County. Because when we had our annual meetings and Cherry would present the financial information to us, Frankie would take a hard look at it. And if the debt wasn't going down the way Frankie thought it should, you'd hear about it. And I was always amazed that he was knowledgeable about so many things, but it certainly has been a pleasure and we're gonna miss him.
Very good. So in this weekend's paper you saw where Jonathan Field and his dad spot where he said, yeah, I think we're on the right path. We missed the debt, so you know. That would have been too far from the tree, didn't it? So a lot of times Frankie's humor overrode some of the seriousness because, you know, I could ask Frankie a building codes council question and he'd come and ask me so that he really sure he'd ask me the right question. But so, but we got more education about the building code in North Carolina. He would just stop the meeting and start on that building code. So we have a lot of education with building codes, damn houses and what it should cost to build a truck, buy a truck. Buy trucks cost too much money, we need other drivers. So he always had a good story and Frankie always followed through as he says, I'm doing what's best for my citizens of our county. We're doing the best for our community and we gotta get this debt down even more. But Jonathan heard today, we gotta fix more plants and some other things, so we'll get a little dose of that.
But the reason why he wanted to do that, because he wanted to assure that people can afford to live here and own property and not just certain people, but everybody. That was his goal?
That was his, so and his legacy and the stewardship of our community, Jonathan's exactly right. They'd always wanted to make sure that every person had a place to stay and could be able to afford to stay here. That's why, you know, he fought hard for the tax rate to be what it is, fought for the utility rates, for the water rates. So we're always up here, we always have a reminder sitting beside us at some point. And then we got these here that come back at Christmas time. Go over to a little here, you can let us pledge allegiance, so y'all are gonna do that this time. We told him to do it again, come back at Christmas time. So I wanna thank y'all for coming, have a little bit of patience for the board. And Ms. Alice, we really sorry about the death of Frankie. We have a legacy to live on. Jonathan's gonna carry his tradition of the Meadses on the board. And so here's our resolution for Frankie. Keep him in line, I think the virtual residents will keep him in line too. All right, we thank y'all. Anybody have anything to say about grandfather? Huh? Anybody? Y'all got, got your time?
As his sister, I'm gonna say he raised
Come on, don't look at it.
Right here.
Okay, you're good.
I'm scared to go there.
Okay, that's fine.
He raised seven wonderful, well-behaved children, all those.
There you go.
And I can answer that with the two I
It was seven, not six, I was wrong.
There you go. So if anybody else has anything to say, we'll be good to go.
Frankie, one forty, forty-five second.
Good right here.
I forgot the grandchildren. Every Christmas time for probably the last four years Frankie would surprise us by bringing eight or nine grandchildren to our house at Christmas time. And have them sing Christmas carols. Now, the voices have all changed now because they've all, they're all grown up, but it was always a special event for us. And the last time he visited us with the grandchildren was two weeks later he passed away. Sorry.
But they will be here at Christmas time. They promised they'll bring us some Christmas carols for Christmas, so we'll have that same spirit again. All righty. Thank y'all for coming and participating and we'll get back to our meeting. We'll give y'all a chance to come. Thank you. Thank you.
Good to see you, ma'am.
Lady, do you have some pictures of all of us out there for you?
Oh, okay.
Did you record it?
Yeah.
She recorded.
All righty, we'll move back off. We got some guests tonight. We have our
Mr. Chairman. I've got one amendment to the amendment. I would like to add item 18 under new business and that would be offer for county property at 333 Windfall Boulevard.
All right, so we'll need an amendment to include the offer to purchase under new business AP, the purchase of AP Windfall property, which has been listed. Questions over. Questions. Second, all need to get that. Charles made a motion, Sean, Barry second. If we're in discussion, all the favors, if I say no, those who both likes not. Ten is amended. All righty. Keith Ham, Community Liaison, Integrated Family Services, will be here to make a presentation concerning mobile crisis services.
What would you like me to say?
Right up here, we just
I got you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I think you can find, unless you're reporting, you should be fine.
We're reporting and we also, we have video. You need to remove your mask during the presentation as well.
Thank you.
You bring your mask down.
Okay. All right. Well, my name is Keith Ham and I'm the Community Liaison for Integrated Family Services. I'm here to talk with you for just a couple of moments tonight to remind you about a service that is available and is being currently utilized by the citizens in Pasquotank County. Integrated Family Services, although we offer a wide array of mental health services in 30 counties in eastern North Carolina, that certainly includes Pasquotank County. I'm here to talk with you tonight to remind you that our mobile crisis is available free of charge to the citizens of Pasquotank County 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We respond and have been for about 10 years in this county to its citizens who are experiencing mental health, substance abuse, crisis, or individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I say there is no charge for mobile crisis services because thanks to Trillium Health Resources, if individuals have Medicaid, private insurance, or no insurance, there's still not a charge for those individuals that we're responding to. We do go out and meet people in the community where they are, be that in their living room, in the McDonald's parking lot, or at the Walmart, or wherever they are, in a crisis situation 24/7, to try to help them not only be able to manage the current crisis that they are in, but also to link them with needed resources to be able to remain out of crisis in the future. And again, we do that for individuals with mental health symptoms, substance use, or intellectual developmental disabilities. It is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. One of the things that we do, well, let me back up and say, we are the only provider of mobile crisis services in 16 counties in northeastern North Carolina. And so that would include Pasquotank County. One of the things that we do that separates us from other folks who do mobile crisis is we have a policy that if law enforcement, magistrates, EMS, our social services request us, our presence at a scene, we will go even if we're unable to build for that interaction. So what we are trying to do when that began was to ease some of the burden off of law enforcement in them responding to mental health situations. Because as you know, if someone's in a crisis, they call 911. And 911 means that EMS, our law enforcement, is gonna respond and that's not always the most appropriate entity to respond. So that's why we work very well with Elizabeth City Police Department, Pasquotank Sheriff's Office. We work in concert with them to be able to respond and as well as the EMS services here in Pasquotank. Work in concert with them to be able to respond and de-escalate these crisis situations, get them away from the scene as quickly as possible. One of the benefits, very briefly, of mobile crisis services is before mobile crisis, an individual was in a mental health crisis situation more times than not, and law enforcement or EMS responded, they were taken to the emergency room, which may not be the most appropriate place to go. Now, there are times that it is, but it may not be the most appropriate. And often they would end up going to a behavioral health hospital when they didn't really need to go. Now, if you think about this for just a moment, if you don't need to go to a behavioral health hospital and you end up there for seven to 10 to 14 days, how many more problems are you going to have when you get out than you did before you went in? Who's been paying the bills? Who's been working my job? Who's been making the money, taking care of the kids? So as a result of mobile crisis services, we divert over 80% of the individuals we respond to from unnecessary trips to the emergency room and to behavioral health hospitals, which is a huge savings because you may have been thinking, okay, so Trillium is willing to pay you to go out, but isn't that a burden on the taxpayers? The contrary. The savings that mobile crisis affords to the taxpayers of North Carolina as a whole amounts to millions of dollars per year by avoiding unnecessary hospitalizations, trips to the emergency department, and incarcerations. Because if an individual's in a mental health crisis, for example, in the parking lot of the 7-Eleven, they're hallucinating and law enforcement's called out, what good is that gonna do to incarcerate that person? Not a bit. They're not gonna get any help that they need. Could you find a way to arrest them? Probably. But that's not gonna do anybody any service, so they call mobile crisis. So we divert a number of individuals from unnecessary incarcerations as well. All right, I gave you a lot of information in a very short time because I'm trying to be respectful of you, but I would be willing to answer any questions if you have them.
All right, we'll start with Bill Stare. No. Sean?
I don't have any questions. I think you answered a couple of them about, you know, whether you take referrals or people had to reach out and call you directly. And I don't think I would do about your service before your visit today, so I appreciate you stopping by.
Good, thank you. Yes, and I'm glad that you did mention that because yes, we can take referrals, but also individuals can call that number. I brought cards for you. These cards need to flow like water in our community because if you think about it, it's the best thing since doorknobs. Where else can you get a mental health professional in your living room in less than two hours, 24 hours a day at no charge? So, but there are so many people who never heard the service, so thank you.
What's the process of if somebody overdoses and immediately gets recalled? What would be the process of how y'all would approach that situation?
We are in a partnership actually with EMS and they do have a post overdose response team, PORT for short. And when they respond to an overdose, for example, after that individual is medically cleared, they have a special EMS worker which offers assistance to that individual to get the help that they need with their addiction and we partner with them. So they can call us and we come in. Very good question.
Barry?
That was the only question I had. I did realize y'all would come out even in off hours. I thought it was you have a client that you could deal with the next day or what have you. See, I'm assuming you have home-call people, British County, or is it you cover a vast area? How does that part of it work?
Well, thankfully for Pasquotank, we have a major office here. So we are usually responding out of Pasquotank and they'll cover Camden, Currituck, and Kirkwemms. And then we've got folks that'll cover Currituck. Or, excuse me, yeah.
Barry?
Are you working out of Trillium colonization, the mental health colonization?
We are in contract with them, yes. We are not part of Trillium, but we are in contract with them to provide these services.
Are you in contact with the police department and so forth to help them with training so they know exactly when you are available?
Yes, sir. I'm glad you asked that because we have a tremendous relationship with Elizabeth City Police Chief Buffalo and the sheriff. We have a great relationship with them and are constantly giving them much-needed training on accessing our services. We are also in the process of developing an even greater partnership with them as well as Department of Social Services where one of our workers will actually be embedded within those organizations and will be accessible 24/7 to law enforcement and social services, both the sheriff's office, police department, and social services.
My last question. We all know that a large percentage of people that are incarcerated have a lot of mental illness. So are you in contact or in services that they jail to help with that?
We are not at this time, but it's not by choice, it's by service definition. So in other words, from the state, and I can't speak intelligently about that service definition, but I know that at this time, mobile crisis services are not able to go into the jail safe. However, we do partner with the detention centers so that when someone is being released, if they need help, we can come out then upon the release. We cannot go into the facility. Great question.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much for coming. This is my second time hearing a presentation from you and the information's been very valuable. I bet you could come to that all of the commissioners because here's some of the things that you're doing. And it's also good to hear that you're working without the local officials and that's very important. Just to put one clarification, if they call the police first, then they don't necessarily call you. Am I clear on that?
Well, the police can call us, dispatch can call us, and that is their, their protocol actually here in Pasquotank County that if it is a mental health situation, then they will call us so that we can co-respond with them.
But one of the concerns that we've heard is sometimes they end up in ER and people have to sit there with them, spend a lot of time with them. But I guess at that point, you aren't involved with them anyway.
No, sir. There are about 20% or less, the number of people that we see, end up in the ER. But there are times that they end up there before we're called. Perhaps the situation was beyond our scope. They perhaps already attempted suicide, for example, or something of that nature, where it's a foregone conclusion that they need to go to the ER. But we do cut down on those unnecessary trips to the emergency room.
Thank you. Okay. So we met the manager, I was checking my neck, Phil Jackson, president. And some of the things that gives us concern is the amount of response time to getting support and getting out of the hospital. And so are you, are you getting them when they get to the hospital? Are you getting them when they're ready to leave the hospital? At what time do you start interacting with your services?
We're catching them prior to going to the hospital. That's what I said, we, over 80% of the individuals we see don't end up at the hospital. However, where the hospital comes into play is often folks will just show up there. So we did not, and that's why I say, not enough people know about our services in Pasquotank County because they'll show up at the ER and once they do, because of the entalment law, obviously, they have to be brought into the emergency room. But where we offer services and work very well with them is if an individual shows up at the ER, perhaps they don't meet the criteria to go on to a behavioral health hospital, but the doctor doesn't want to just discharge them either. We can, once they're discharged from the ER, we can meet them, the hospital provides a family room for us and our clinician can accompany them and begin services right there. So it's a, it's great for the hospital in the sense that, you know, a lot of times those doctors don't want to discharge them because there's a little fear that something might happen, but they really don't quite meet the criteria to go to the hospital. So we're available, but we cannot see them while they're under the cage of a hospital.
This is pretty good perspective of what you're dealing with and what you're working with every day. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all very much.
So any other questions? If not, we'll move on to
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Trillium representative. Come forward. He's already asking the questions back up.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. As the chairman and a member of the board, I appreciate Mr. Jordan's service. He is our representative from Pasquotank County and my governor's board. He's very supportive and he's very concerned about citizens of Pasquotank County. We have certain discussions about that. So he's doing his job where you're concerned, Tarzan. And Dr. Robinson, Jonathan Robinson, is also your other appointee. And he continues to be a very active member. And he's currently our vice chair of our government board. Appreciate the support. And I'm gonna be brief, as brief as I can, if you'll just start rolling. Um, great.
Do you have a PowerPoint?
You know, but I just might as well look at mine. That's a little too far away. All right, go on, go to the next slide. So, I mean, everybody knows who we are. But just to go over a review a little bit, we have twenty-six counties. We've got twenty-six counties that we cover under Trillium. Our budget is based on two hundred and sixty-six Medicaid eligible's across the twenty-six counties. We actually served a little over fifty-eight thousand people last year. The services that we provided or that we authorized or contracted for, I should say, was a little over four hundred and seventy-six million dollars. Is what the services cost us. We manage a provider network much like any other insurance company. We have about five hundred providers that we manage. Okay? Go on. So, one of the main things that Trillium's been concerned with this past year, and will be even more concerned in addition to what we've been working on is, I don't have any of your heart of Medicaid transformation. It is a, it is a presentation in itself. But briefly, it's a transition based on the General Assembly that says we want to move Medicaid from a fee-for-service, we want to move fee-for-service to a managed care type of situation. But that's what this managed care, this Medicaid transformation is about. So there are actually two different types of Medicaid plans that will be available for our Medicaid consumers and our injured population. That's firstly, the standard plan. You can roll the standard plans. So the RFP was posted on the website in the division. They selected five insurance companies. It's the first time that insurance companies ever managed Medicaid dollars in real this time. So it's AmeriHealth, La Croft, United Healthcare, WellCare, Carillon Complete Health. And these particular insurance companies were selected through the RFP process to manage the mild and moderate symptoms of Medicaid recipients. Um, next slide? No, no, hold right there. So in addition, standard plans, so there's a timeline involved with how that's gonna be rolled out, beginning this month, March the fifteenth, through May the fourteenth, we'll be enrolled. Anybody that falls under the standard plan criteria, and the state is making that decision, not Trillium. Anybody that falls under that criteria will be required to enroll in one of those side insurance that have been listed, that were awarded the RFP. So if they don't enroll by May the fifteenth, they're gonna be enrolled auto-enrolled so they won't have any choice about Medicaid. So that's gonna be effective July one right up this year. So the standard plans will begin to serve those individuals with Medicaid who have low to moderate behavioral health needs. So I think, one of the things I'll stop and just say this quickly because I think it's important for communities to hear. So if I have been seeing a doctor for twenty years, and I'm gonna have to sign up for one of these plans, if I don't pick a plan that my doctor has a contract with, then I can't see that doctor. So it's very important that individuals are careful about how they enroll with these insurance companies and who they select. The easiest thing to do is to pick up the phone and say to your doctor, what insurance companies are you contracting with? And that's the one I'll pick. Because all the Medicaid services in any of those are all the same. They're all required to do about the same. So I think that's just important, we need to say something about. Okay, there you go. So the tailored plan is the other option for Medicaid transformation. The tailored plan is gonna be managing the high-risk services for individuals. And in addition to the behavioral health issues for people with with high-cost services, they'll also be managing the physical health, which is something we've never done before. So we'll be managing pharmacy benefits. We'll be managing the physical health and the behavioral health of those individuals who fall under the tailored plan criteria. So the RFA for the tailored plan was just released in November. And so we have until February to actually respond to the RFP. Only MCOs like Trillium, the seven of us across the state, are the only ones who are allowed to respond to this RFP this time. Let's go around. So we got our application in, you know, in February, and they're gonna award those contracts in June. And then we'll have a readiness review, and then that tailored plan will be effective a year later. So it'll be July twenty-twenty-two. So what it's gonna look like is that we'll be managing the whole person. And the whole point of it is, you've got one person with an insurance card, and they can take that card and they can see their doctor, they can see their psychiatrist, they can see their behavioral health provider, they can get their medicines all in one card, under one umbrella, and everybody knows what's going on with that individual rather than they're being served in silos. So nobody knows what's going on with the person and whatever services they're getting. The other thing that we're gonna be focusing on is social determinants of health. We know that if transportation, if our housing is unstable, if we have food insecurities, if those aren't satisfied, then there's no way we can concentrate on what our behavioral health issues are. I can't work on my recovery if I don't where my children go tonight, where I'm gonna get food. So we're having to develop plans that are gonna address some of those issues as well. We'll have to contract with all the pharmacies in our counties, all the primary care physicians. So this is something that's gonna be pretty new for us. You can go to the next slide. So what are the impacts that we'll see today? It's kinda like what Keith was saying. The people that they are responding to right now won't necessarily be the people that they're responding to July one unless they have a contract with those insurance companies. We still have our contract with all of the providers, those stipending providers that are in our network. And any special arrangements we have with school systems in providing outpatient therapists, school-based therapy, those kinds of situations. If they fall under the tailored plan, we'll still manage their services. But if those kids don't have, they don't fall under the tailored plan and they fall under the standard plan, if they don't have a contract with one of those five, then there are issues. So that's why it's so important that we all kind of know what this is gonna look like. And, you know, and of course, the insurance companies there, they're trying to have contracts with all the providers as well because it's important that they give the service all the individuals that are permitted to get the services. So enough about Medicaid transformation. Unless you have some questions, we'll come back to Medicaid.
Can I ask one thing? Because we forget when we get to the end. Have me understand, so you said after July one, they won't, potentially won't have a plan, but if they don't enroll, they're gonna be auto-enrolled? Have me, I'm not clear on that.
So, so everybody, all of the Medicaid recipients who qualify for the standard plan have been mailed a package. They'll tell them who in their household qualifies for the standard plan. These are the choices you have, and you have to sign up for one. You can do it in a package, you can do it over the phone, you can do it on your iPhone, several different applications. So, but if I don't do that, and I just let it go, or I don't open my mail, or I don't pay attention, I let the date go by, I won't have an insurance because they're gonna put them in. So that's just, I mean, they, and I don't know how that will be done, be on some kind of rotation kind of schedule. I'm not sure how, what would be involved in that. But everybody will be enrolled in a plan. If they don't choose one, they will be put in.
So when they're put in one, while they did not be served up to July one, like they were previous?
Well...
Is it only if their provider doesn't take the insurance?
That's right.
Okay, so it would be based on the provider not providing, based on which one they gotta roll into?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got you. All right. I just wanna make sure that it's like, they're all doing enrolled, but what if they're not? They don't choose the one that works for them?
That's right.
That's when they're out. Got you.
That's right. So just a few issues around COVID-19 that we've been doing over the course of this year. It's been a crazy year. This is the second time I've been face-to-face with anybody that has anything to do with Trillium since March. So it really feels good to get out again. So anyway, so, you know, we've developed a webpage specifically for COVID-19 information. We've actually allowed the health departments to put a link on our website so people can, we can be sure that you get as much information about vaccinations and schedules and that kind of thing, information that they need. We've actually paid a lot of increased rates to our providers. We have providers that had staff that got COVID that couldn't work and had to pay a lot of overtime, keep staff. They had paid for PPEs or a lot of prison equipment. We have been paying them increased rates, this all since March, and we'll be continuing to do that. All of our services are usually prior authorizations. We are not requiring any prior authorizations for services. They can go directly into the service without getting a request or filling out paperwork. We actually did supply a lot of COVID kits to our providers in all of our counties, not only Pasquotank. For some of our consumers and providers as well, have hand sanitizer masks, those kind of things. And for every service that there was any way possible, we got permission for them to be able to be provided, get telehealth. So we've actually paid for people to get iPhones or those supplies to be able to see people face-to-face, help support providers in doing some of that as well. So they won't have to actually come into the office. So we've done a lot of that. Let's see, very quickly. Let's go to some projects so I can, and I'll be done. Project updates. One of the things that we have done at Trillium in trying to work more collaboratively with DSS is we actually hired a liaison person who was actually, had a lot of experience working at DSS, to be their go-between between Trillium to when they have hard cases to manage, when they have kids that are spending the night in their offices or in hotels. Those kinds of hard cases, we've actually hired someone to kind of help address those and help be the go-between. And one of the other things that we've done with Integrated Family Services, actually, where Keith works for, we have actually contracted with them to develop respite homes for DSS. So if they have kids that they have to take from a home in a very emergency situation and need placement, we've got homes that we are continuing to open across our twenty-six counties. And we do have some counties up in this area that have used those. They get fourteen days in those, and Trillium pays for those, the fourteen days. And maybe they'll have, be able to get them back by the end of that fourteen days. But trying to do some of that, keeping them having to stay in the office with our workers, continue to provide lots of kits, usually twice a year when we get money for our counties. So just one more last thing, just to kind of talk specifically about Pasquotank. And I do want to say Keith kind of touched on it a little bit, but one of the, we're developing a pilot project and Pasquotank County's been selected as one of two counties that we're gonna try it in, and it's, we've contracted with Integrated Family Services. And it will be a co-responder situation between law enforcement or the police department and DSS. So that if DSS has to go out on the call, it'll be someone, a clinician from Integrated that can ride with them if they anticipate any kind of issues that may, that may happen. It's a little different than mental crisis because not every situation that DSS goes through or that law enforcement is called is necessarily a crisis. So we're gonna pilot that program, and it's working in other states. So we've got two, three counties, we're gonna try it in our area to see how it works. But I think the police department, and I think DSS has decided about that project. So wanted to mention that specifically. So last year, Pasquotank County received, well, we served eighteen hundred, from Pasquotank County. So thirteen hundred and fifty-six of those had mental health issues. Three hundred and eighteen had substance abuse issues. And then there were two hundred and ten individuals that received intellectual disability services. So that's, that's how Pasquotank looks in terms of what services they've accessed this past year. You got any questions for me? That's kind of quick.
We're here for Charles Cross, he sits on the board with you. We'll go right in the room after that.
Now, if you don't have any questions, I'd certainly thank you for coming. And certainly, Mr. Baker works very hard. And the northern region is pretty, is pretty large, and he certainly works very hard. And he certainly is always available when I have questions to ask him. And I just wanted to thank him for the fact that he's safe.
Okay, Bill Starek, any questions? Sean?
Good question, thank you.
Oh, John. Any questions?
The respite homes in particular, are they manned by volunteers? Was that DSS? They're actually paid?
They're not manned by DSS, see. We call DSS homes because they're specific...
That's what I wanted.
For DSS involved you.
Right.
So Integrated has to find us a home to get it licensed, and then they actually hire the staff to work there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Perry?
A couple of questions. First, how do you, I served on a mental health board a minute. It was a little different.
Right.
And people sort of had an idea pretty much where to go and how to go about getting services. How do you let people know? There are a lot of people out there without computers and so forth. How do you let them know that your services are available? You know, in the community, it was advertised. How do you, how do you tell people what they need to do to receive a service? How do you, how do you tell people what they need to do to receive a service?
Well, it's still advertised. We have meetings in every county, a variety of meetings, that our system of care coordinators, there's one in every county, sits on those meetings, and they're constantly talking about what Trillium offers, how to access services, what there is, what we do provide, how to contact Trillium. The, the thing about it is, though, that you don't have to call Trillium. If, if I live in Elizabeth City, and I know there's a provider that's providing some kind of mental health service, so in that building, I can go right over there and I walk right in and give you the call. I don't have to call Trillium, but if, if they're contracted, contracted with me, then they can walk right in and get it, but I guess it's through, through advertisement, through our website, through, and a lot of people do use social media more than you would say. And then, again, we have lots of meetings in our communities, our providers have meetings, and all of them are constantly talking about Trillium. We have the RAC card, shows people how to contact Trillium, what the 800 number is, how they can call us, where we're located, those kind of things.
So, you are the contact person for Pasquotank County?
Well, I certainly can be. I, I mean, when I say that, it's that I can put you in contact with somebody who can help you, I can't always be the one who helps you, but I know where I'm gonna get. I guess that's why I'm telling you, yeah, absolutely, anytime you need to call me, you can call.
And the other thing is, do you run the services for schools?
Do we what?
Do you have services for the schools?
Well, as I said, we work very hard to put outpatient therapists in every school system, and I know Pasquotank County has one, and we have them in the majority of our school systems. We did an RFP, and those who were interested responded, so, the other thing that we did was, we actually developed a, a website or a link specifically for kids, specifically for teachers and parents, that didn't cost to join, you have to go on our website, and you click a link, and you get a password to go in, and it has lots of information bullying, how to recognize suicidal types of variations in kids, for, for parents, for teachers as well. We do a lot of that in the school system, we had contests, and actually, one of the schools in Elizabeth City won, and got a $5,000 check for utilizing the, the link and the service. One of the other things we've kind of partnered with, that is in the school system, so it's advertised, is Integrated Family Services also has a crisis chat service that, that flies up in the school, and so, if I wanna talk to somebody, whether I give my name or not, I can click that link, or I can call that number, and I can chat with somebody right on the phone, if I've had a bad day, or, or how to get help, or if I need some advice, or, so, there, there are several things that we've done in the past to try to help support schools.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Well, I want to thank you for coming.
Sure.
It's kind of an annual event.
Yeah, it is.
And it doesn't change.
No.
It's just the type of service that you're in, it's just, we're there for community support, support activity.
Right.
And we're benefiting from that, what is it, 28 counties now, the 26, 26 county representatives of Trillium is responsible for, so, it's a large budget, a lot of responsibilities, so I want to thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
And we'll, we'll see you in a while.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, old business. Jerry, what's your chairman there?
Yeah, we have one layover from the last meeting, we had a recommendation for Ms. Russell to the Animal Control Board, and copies of application were provided to you, we just need to move on that, that name tonight, there are no other appointees, no one has an issue.
So, you're making a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay. We have a second from Cecil or Charles, any further questions, questions, or any other nominees? If none, all those in favor sitting in the box, say aye. Those who opposed, like so. Concerned agenda is approval of minutes, tax releases and refunds, solid waste refund, and a proclamation claiming March 2021 as the 19th annual March Reals Month. Laura Rollison is the administrator of this board of commissioners, the air market commissioner. Any other questions to approve the concerned agenda?
So, who's the second?
Jerry makes his motion for approval, saying from Sean, meaning during the discussion, for business to be added. If none, all those in favor sitting in the box, say aye. Those who opposed, like so. Sheldon, you have, you own a presentation?
I don't have one.
Okay, all right. Sheldon, your map next time, make the map just a little bit bigger, the actual area that we've had, so that, you can have it three, but it's just, just give it a little better geography.
Okay, the G I S now?
Yeah, just a little bit bigger area, like 17.
Sure.
Just that way the group can see where these places are.
Okay.
All right, we're ready to go.
So, this application is for Creekside Farms Phase Three, the final plat application. The location of the subdivision is west of the intersection of Creek Road and Lunders Lane in Providence Township. Main Street Extended Development LLC is the developer of the subdivision. They're requesting final plat approval for 16 residential lots, and this is the final phase of this development, so once they complete that, they will have a total of 75 lots. The properties are 15 residential, and lot sizes range from 43,000 square feet to 45,364 square feet in Phase Three. Under the current school districting, students generated from this development would attend Northside Elementary School, Elizabeth City Middle School, and Pasquotank County High School. The development is within the Providence Volunteer Fire Department Division, and they have installed fire hydrants throughout the development. The area is also served by the Pasquotank County Water System, and they've installed borderlines in accordance with the preliminary plat, and that has been approved by the border superintendent. On-site septic systems will be utilized at this location, and our regional health services has conditionally approved the lots in Phase Three for septic systems. The area requested for final plat approval is located within flood zone X and shaded X, so there are no lots beneath the bigger floodplain. There's also no wetlands being used at this location. They have installed all the improvements, except for the asphalt on the streets, and that is allowed under state statutes and the county subdivision ordinance. They have established a letter of credit to ensure completion of the streets in the amount of $78,438. Since they do meet all the requirements for compliance within the subdivision ordinance, they are already approved.
Okay. So, is anyone here speaking on the project, Sheldon?
I don't see a representative here.
I've seen it from the engineer, I see there's, all right, so what we'll do, we'll have a minute. So, any questions? Charles?
No.
Jonathan? Perry?
It's not pertinent to this plan, but does the school district still come out here to you, meaning, do you get a call back?
Yes.
Probably not recently.
They're in violation of the sketch plan when they first bring the development in.
Yeah.
We do invite the school district in the past, it's been, is anyone from the superintendent or their best man, which sometimes is the bus garage director, but yes, absolutely, they are on the list for pretty subdivisions.
Awesome, thanks, Sheldon.
All right, Charles?
Sheldon, just general question, under flood zone, you talked about the fact that they're in the zone X, does that mean that they don't have an extensive flood?
So, zone X is the 500-year floodplain, and that's generally not considered, I mean, it is 500-year floodplain, but for mortgage insurance, or flood insurance purposes, they don't require flood insurance, so it's, most of the time when people think of the 100-year floodplain, that's the AE zone, and that's when you have to have the flood insurance to have mortgage, but this is, is not within that, that's just a shaded X, which is 500 year.
So, when you're looking at these possibilities, is it the flooding, the possibilities of flood, is that looked into, or are there any discussions with drainage?
Well, for new subdivisions, yes, and, and absolutely, this subdivision, drainage hasn't been looked at. This is the oldest subdivision that we have had, that's still been kind of lingering out there. Usually, developers have two years, once a preliminary plat is approved, to get a final plat in. However, this subdivision came in back when the market was dropped, and the state had approved some delays in development approvals. So, the state basically put a stop on, or hold on, on all of our development approvals, and this one was caught up in that, so they were really slow, really getting this development moving. They also requested from the board commissioners to receive four different additional time periods to get that preliminary plat in, so they, they, this has been a lot slower. The subdivision was not originally approved under the county's drainage ordinance that we now have adopted, and however, our school engineer did review this development back when the preliminary plat was approved, it just kind of fell into that area before the manual was adopted. They do have drainage dishes installed throughout this phase and all the other phases. I reviewed that, made sure that all of the elevations are where they should be in relation to what was shown in the preliminary plat, which has come into your phase. So, they, they, this, this development, I wouldn't be as concerned about flooding this to somebody else.
Ready? Good? All right. All those in favor, need a motion to accept the preliminary plat? We've got that, and we have a second? Who's the second?
I don't think we did.
Okay, we have a bunch, that's what I'm saying. Second from Sean. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor sitting in the box, say aye. Those who opposed, like so. Thank you, Sheldon. At this time, there was been discussion about masks, mask protocol, so, as part of your life, you don't find any, what, kind of where we are in the state status, and governor's mandates and orders?
Mr. Chairman, there, there, no, we couldn't find any jurisdictions that had any specific written policies regarding masks. It's jurisdictions have practices that they implemented, such as the city of Elizabeth City, there are practices that everyone wears a mask the entire period of time. In some cases, there may be a requirement to wear a mask, except when the person's speaking, and if you look at the governor's order, that is one of the exceptions, that, you know, if, if someone is speaking in a meeting or a presentation, then you're not required to wear a mask. So, that would be, so really, it, it would be, as the board's prerogative as to whether or not, in a way, to establish a practice like that.
So, the discussion is, is reemphasized from the governor's meeting last week, was, you know, still six-foot separation, still the mask, still the, is that right?
Yes.
All right, so let's go around the room and have a little bit of discussion on this. Charles?
Well, I guess, I guess my, my opinion is that, I mean, we're, we're in this room, and this room is not really that large, and to be as safe as we can, and to look out for each other, I think would be helpful that we did keep masks on, and except when we're speaking. I know that at times, times asked to pull the mask off when we're speaking, and I can understand that, but I think we have to be very careful, because the fact that we don't live with each other all the time, we don't know what is happening when we, when we come out, so to be safe, and I know for me, I don't want to take anything home to my wife, and I think it's just something that we probably need to look at, just to be safe and to look out for each other.
Yep. All right. Phil, yes, I don't see anything unsafe about the way we're operating, and as all of you have noticed, I've had to ask the speaker to take their mask off. If they don't, you can't hear back there.
Nope.
And we need everyone to be able to hear, and we're far enough apart, there's one, two, three, four, five people, we're far enough apart, and we're not breathing on each other. We could be a little bit further apart if you want to be, but I don't feel comfortable sitting here with a mask on, the whole meeting. I like the way we operate right now, there's nothing wrong with it. Who, who is it that wants to make a change?
Doesn't matter.
Who wants to make a change?
Doesn't matter.
That?
Doesn't matter.
No one, no one wants to make a change.
Doesn't matter.
So?
You know, just, just my comments, I, I also agree with Bill, Dr. Starett, however you're supposed to be addressing today. I, I don't, I don't see anything unsafe by the way we're operating here, and quite frankly, I think that the numbers in the trends in the state, certainly in our health department district, are very positive and favorable, and I would actually be in favor of a motion lifting the declaration of emergency there, so I think we're headed on, on the, the upswing, and should be getting out of this here pretty soon, we've got another vaccine that's gonna be available here shortly, and attacks the virus in a different, different way, so, those are my thoughts.
Okay, Jonathan?
I have to agree with Dr. Starett and Sean. I mean, I, people get the virus wearing a mask, people get the virus not wearing a I mean, if I come up to somebody, I'm gonna put my mask on, you know, out of being respectful and polite. I, I don't see any problems with the distance, I mean, I think we're fine. The numbers are obviously coming down, I mean, the governor is, does restrictions, and hopefully he drops all restrictions here in the next month or so. I agree with Sean, I, I think our county does need to drop the emergency.
That discussion we had at different times, because there's some, according to the county manager and the attorney, is that there's some stipulations with grant reimbursements or reimbursables for sicknesses or illnesses that are attached to that, where if we, we were not in line with the governor's order, we would probably be included for reimbursements or refunds and things, so we've got to be careful on those type of requests, so, but we can, that would be at a different time, I think somebody's trying to find out exactly what that would be. Perry?
I mean, it's, you know, it's not worth arguing about, I guess, because, I guess I've always got an analogy throughout, but if my grandfather didn't want everybody to have their hat on at the table, and we all took it off, out of respect for that one person, so, I sure don't want to make any one person feel comfortable, and if this just takes wearing a mask to keep everyone comfortable, then I'm certainly willing to do that. Hopefully, that's the only thing I have to do, that's the worst thing I have to do, is wear my mask, and I'm completely fine with that, so I'm, I'm good in the way, I take mine off when we're socially distanced, because I think that's the only thing that's factual, it's come out of anything you ever read, and whatever opinion you have, you can find something to back it up, is what I'm saying, no matter which side you're on, but being distanced, I think, is probably one of the things that is factual, that it's shown if you wash your hands and you can stay far enough from someone, you're probably gonna be okay, but like John said, if I get up and be close to somebody, I put a mask on, but out of respect for others that would be more comfortable had I had it on, then if I'm in that setting, I'm gonna put it on, because I don't want anyone to be disrespected or feel disrespected, because of my opinion, maybe stronger, so I, I mean, I'm good for the better of the group besides.
Perry? Your thoughts?
I, I sort of feel the same way, they feel about it, I mean, I don't know what the consequences for not doing it, if there's something that we have to do that's going to affect the organization, I see it as being something that we should do, but by the same token, I heard people talk about this, social distancing, if they're talking to someone, they, you know, if they put their mask on, I think that's, that's important, but by the same token... put their mask on, I think that's, that's important, but by the same token, you know, probably being the oldest person in the courtroom, knowing that death will come faster to me and other people, I certainly would wear a mask if I felt I was not vaccinated and so forth proper. So I think that's pretty much where I am with it, so.
Very good. So a couple of things that have happened in the past couple of weeks, I've, I met with the hospital last week at their quarterly meeting, and, you know, the hospital's not had any severe flu cases this year. One is, I guess, people weren't in school, so our human bee traditions are not taking home our colds and flus through the lifetime. Another thing with the social distancing and the hand cleaning, it's been very positive. Unfortunately, those that have had the COVID virus, a lot of those have kind of lived with this, and they've had a lot of, some have been, the outcomes have not been very good for some families. It's very sad to see those happen. I think our president has had a declaration, and even in prayer last week, two weeks ago, just to memorialize those who've also liked this COVID. And so, we're all here, I looked in the back of the room, I said, there were people with their mask off, off, and I'm thinking like what the members were saying, those that respect both, both parties as Barry was saying, I mean, if I walk up to somebody and I know them, you know, I respect their space and their six feet and their mask. So as the general rule, I mean, there's not really a general, there's not really a policy, not a procedural procedure that we would need to follow. I think it's what, you know, the board is comfortable with our six feet, I think Sparty worked hard to make sure that this room is separated for us, and, and as Sparty says, I wear a mask every day, trying to respect not only the governor's orders, but the people that are in my space. So at this time, I don't really think there's any action that we need to take that we might. I think it's, you know, just respect what, you know, the space that we work in and how we respect each other. Okay? Any other questions about this? Very good. All right. Mike, you're supporting, talked a little bit about the tourism development authority and the composition, I think this has been going on for a little bit, the recreation and restructuring.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at the November 30th joint city-county meetings, city council conveyed concerns regarding the number of appointments that the city has on the TBA board. Right now, there is, the current allocation is one county commissioner, one city counselor, two from the hotel motel industry recommended by the industry, one city appointment, three county appointments, and one from the hotel motel industry based upon a joint recommendation of both the city and the county. The city and the county both had one appointment on the TBA until it was expanded from seven to nine members in August of 2007. So that really caused an imbalance, and with county having three appointments and city having one. And what I'm recommending is shifting one of the three county appointments to the city, and that would result in both the city and county having two appointments. I did contact the county manager at the time to find out if there was any reasoning why both of those new appointments went to the county, and he said he couldn't even remember what was discussed, so there was really no reason for it. There is a statute in place that, that established the TBA, but it doesn't address the, the allocation of members. So I do think, in, in the, the sense of making sure that we, we both have equal balance on this, I would recommend shifting one of the county appointments to the city. Also have Karina Rupia here, our TBA director, is in attendance, if you had any questions for her as well.
Karina, would you make a statement or anything on this, or are you okay with the proposed?
It is absolutely fine. We are the Elizabeth City Hospital and County Tourism Development Authorities, so to share the appointments to the board between the city and the county seems equitable, and also seems like a good move forward in continuing to build positive relationships. So I'm absolutely good with it.
All right, so we will need a motion to approve the change of the board, right?
Yes, and, and if the board approves this, we would bring back the resolution to March 15.
Okay. So we need a motion to move this forward as considered, consideration as presented by staff and the tourism development authority. Mr. Perry makes the motion, Perry seconds, is that correct? All right, any further discussion on this? If none, all those in favor, second to five, say no. All those opposed, like so. All right, River City Community Development Corporation, criminal homelessness program, Sparty going to lead into this, and I see we have representatives from the River CDC in their back, yeah, Mr. Black, the director of that organization.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had a request of the River City CDC to obtain the county's support in getting FEMA funds for hotel rooms for homeless in response to COVID-19. The funding would not require any county match funds. We would need to have a memorandum of understanding in place. The state emergency management did not have a MOU that met this particular circumstance. The MOU they had was for situations where an entity actually had a homeless shelter, so they were supposed to be forwarding the MOU this week, and if the board wants to move forward with this program, what I would recommend is approving, subject to the review approval, the MOU by the Mercy Management Coordinator, county attorney and county manager.
Very good. Lenora or Carolyn, you'll have a comment on this?
No, I think you explained it very well.
Okay, she was saying was, you, we explained it very well, is that right?
That's nice.
Masked them up.
I don't have anything else.
Just make it short for the record for laying that out, okay?
Okay.
All right, so you've heard the discussion from the manager, we're waiting for the approval of a memorandum of understanding. However, we need to move forward so we can get that memorandum moving forward, is that correct, Mr. Manager?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll need a motion to, a motion from Mr. Perry, a second from Charles Jordan, any further discussion about the program?
Yes, discussion. Problems associated with this business over the years, and I would like to see a final memorandum of understanding with some wording in there about who's going to police this, who, who's going to be in charge of this? Because what has happened over the years is that the Patel family, you all know the Patel family? Well, the Patel family is big time in the hotel business in this town, and they, they had some problems with people staying at their place, or people that weren't staying at their place, and they were getting funds from various organizations in the community to accommodate people. People need to be accommodated, we need to, we need to address this issue, but before I can vote yes for this, I would like to see who's going to be in charge. What's the memorandum of understanding?
Carolyn or Lenora, do you want to explain about the memorandum of understanding and what we're doing in administering, administering the program and accountability? I think that's what Mr. Starett's asking.
The memorandum of understanding is with FEMA from the state and the county of the Patel family. And after you all sign the memorandum of understanding, we have to assign, sign a memorandum of understanding and to administer the program, that's all that it is.
So the question, I think, Bill was asking, who's the checker, the checker and the accountability to the program?
We will be accountable to the state, because we're the ones who have to sign the memorandum of understanding saying what, you know, we would be governing that, and that will be based on what they present the memorandum of understanding to us.
May I express the reason why I made the motion?
Go ahead.
I made a motion to move forward with it because of Mrs. Starett's accountability and all of the things. I know that there's a lot of things that has occurred, happened, just as, I don't know, good friend, you'll still have to mention, but I know that she has handled an awful lot of old situations that occurred, handling funds and so forth, and just because I believe that it will be properly handled through her is the reason why I made, I made the motion, really. That's the reason why I motioned, because I think that her organization speaks for, pretty much speaks for us, really, with the malamudia and so forth that we handle right now.
Mr. Back, can I follow?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Back, the memorandum of understanding, it kind of gives you a layout or detail of how the money's spent, how it's accountable, and how you record the funding, right?
Right, and that would be the state.
I think this is what Mr. Starett's asking, where, where is the accountability to the program? I don't know if you heard his question.
The answer is between River State, River City and FEMA.
Right.
The memorandum you will be signing just saying that the county is endorsing the program, that's all. It has nothing to do with the actual operation. That FEMA can, will be, you all okay with FEMA placing the program here?
It's, Mr. Chairman, it, it's basically a flow through, a flow through the county, but the, the key thing that the memorandum will address is, is the rate per night for each drink, and that's, that's the big thing that they're looking for, is it can't exceed a certain amount.
And will we get that for our next meeting, right? memorandum or we won't have a memorandum?
Well, it, it's, if, if the board, what CD, what River City CDC is requesting is that the board move forward so they can get the funding.
I, I just, if you're going to pay a motel to house someone, you need to make sure that that's what's happening.
So we've already have a motion, motion and a second, any further discussion on this?
Mr. George, has the River City CDC ever done a program like, like this previously?
Yeah, we have.
Barry, Jonathan?
Yeah, I get, who, who is responsible when these people are in, in these hotels? And when they, they tear the place up?
Who's responsible if the people that are being helped, tear up the motel, who's responsible for paying the damages?
We closely work with the management and owners of the motels. We have a zero tolerance policy. I mean, if I find out somebody has poured a TV up, or whatever the case may be, or put a hole in a wall, they're out of the program. And this is, I'll explain to them upfront what the rules and expectations are. So we try to be careful about that, we're trying to do a circle by the service, but at the same time, we're not going to let them abuse the service.
Right. Now, how about drug use? Is there some kind of stipulation in there?
We don't do the drug testing, if that's what you're asking. We don't do that, but we have a zero policy. More than once, I've had phone calls, we found needles in a room, that party's asked to leave immediately. Law enforcement has been involved when necessary, I mean, we, we're here to provide a service, and we don't want to let a few bad eggs, so to speak, myself, everything, for everyone. So we try to take this seriously.
All right, Perry?
Two questions.
Mr. Perry, any further follow up?
Good.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Good.
All righty, at this time, we have a motion and we have a second, all those in favor of memorandum of understanding with CDC and FEMA, second to five, say no. All those opposed, like sign. And now we're down to AE, which is the Winfall property, offer to purchase, is that right, Sparty?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
I got an email from Alex Rich about 30 minutes before this meeting started, we do have another offer for our property, F333 Winfall Boulevard, we had it originally listed at 159,000, we had an offer back in October of 2020, where a church came in and offered 130, and then we, the board finally agreed to accept 130, but then the church pulled away from that offer because they were going to have to purchase some additional land. Then in February 1st of this year, we had another offer for 100, $100,000 for, for the property, countered at 130, and they didn't come back. So now we've got the same church that originally put in the offer for 130, which is the New Love Fellow Church, and they have made an offer for 120 now. And the rationale is they're going to have to buy additional land, so that's the, the offer that they have on the table at this time. What I would recommend, once again, is going back and countering at 130.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Go back to 130. Bill, Isaiah, Sean, Jonathan, back to 130. Perry?
Are you thinking stick with that number, stick at 130, if you have any variation there?
I might, you know, at, at this point, what I, well, of course, we got Paul here, but, you know, negotiating in public is not a good thing, so if I get called a whole long on this article for, but, but at this point, you know, the property's been up for sale between five and six months, the church is really the only one that's expressed any interest, it's a, it's a commercial piece of property that's very isolated. I would say if I could get authorization to go down to 125 at this point, because the other thing is, you know, it, it is isolated, we're, we're getting ready to hit grass season, you know, we're going to have to maintain the property.
You want my next question, Mr.?
Yeah, and so, you know, at this point, if it's, if it's 5,000 difference, I, I would say, give me authority down to 125.
If they're serious about it, I think they lose over that small of a percentage of opportunity to move, because the property's been holding, we don't need to be holding on it anymore.
Absolutely, we don't need to be staying in that property.
Say it for a second.
Perry, any thoughts on this piece of property, 130, or negotiate down a little bit?
We'll, 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 young man, young man, young man, negotiating down. He's white, he's black, he's black, he's black.
That is right, that is it. That's exactly right. Let me call it more and I'll get my head out.
I'll, I'll support, I support the group.
All right.
Thank you, that's all, I support that.
All right, so right now, we have offer to purchase for 120,000 dollars. Our county manager feels that there's a possibility that we should consider having a discussion or negotiation with the offer.
I would counter at 130, but I'd like authority to go down to 125, I think.
I'll make a motion about, and they'll order for that, if appropriate.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion about negotiating or accepting the offer? All those in favor, second to five, say no. Those opposed, like sign. All right, county managers report, Sparty been busy, haven't you?
Absolutely, no additional report, Mr. Chairman.
So I was maybe, you want to talk about your retreat last week? We're talking enough about it, right?
We're going to talk about the retreat on March 15th, so.
Very good. This is county attorney's report, Mike.
That's the first one.
All right, we did hand out a document that I didn't receive, I'll, I'll mention that here, Mr. Mayor. All right, internal and external committee reports, Bill?
Okay, I'll go as quick as possible. The community relations committee met recently by Zoom, that went fluidly there, they're doing a good job thinking about doing some things that the community need to be done, and they have a question, and the first question was, can we give $500 of our $2,500 allotment to Elizabeth City State University for a project they've got helping people in need? And I said, give me 45 seconds, I'll give you an answer to that, and that is, your Treasurer, treasurer shall be selected in a regular being and able to serve until your term beginning May 1st. I think you've already done that, okay? Duties, treasurer shall be responsible for keeping the financial records of the commission and making such expenditures as authorized by the commission. So the answer is yes, you can give Elizabeth City State University 500, okay?
They already have $500, they just want to distribute their $500.
Pardon me?
They already have money in their budget, don't they?
Yes, it would be money in their budget.
So it's money that they already have, that they want to contribute to Elizabeth City State University for a project, is that what I understand?
Okay, that's the first one, and the, the second one is, there's Okay, that's the first one, and the second one is, I was thinking about a fundraising event, and came to, the community relations commission is, and it came to my mind, been reading the minutes, that today, the proclamation for planning March twenty twenty-one is the nineteenth annual March for meals month. So that would be something that they can jump right out and do a lot for community relations, helping the poor people. And so, they're going to be involved with that. They do have a lot of questions, but they talked about the food bank, and no one knows where the food bank is. They do now, because I told them where it is. And no one knows what the food bank does. They know a little bit more now. So they're going to be good educated, and they're going to do an awful lot of good because of the people that are involved with it. I got one last thing. I had been asked, along with Mr. Perry, and along with a lady by the name of Sheila Simpson, to join a member of their committee in a meeting where no one else can attend, okay? Closed session meeting. And I said, I don't see a problem with that, and the other person is, well, I just mentioned, Sheila, Sheila Simpson, the three of us will meet to discuss an issue. It was two and a half years ago, and Mr. Perry and I had a long discussion about what can a community relations commission do of significance in the community? And we came up with a good idea. I can't tell you what it is, because it's going to be discussed in closed session, but there's an individual, I'll say this most, there's an individual in this community that has not been recognized the way that person should have been recognized over the years. And we're going to go through, I hope, step by step, to make it possible for that to happen. The first thing we do, we have to contact the family, and the person that is to be recognized has to agree that they'll accept that recognition, that's the person. There are some organizations that need to approve it. One is the county commissioner. This will be a major community relations, significant program for us. And of course, I'm on that committee now, and Sheila Simpson is, so we have to involve local law enforcement, local lawyers association, and we're going to be working on that essentially starting this week, and by the time we meet again, I'll probably have some information. And at some point, you will know as much as I know. Because we'll be coming out of closed session at some point, and so then, that's where you get involved down the line, okay? And some of you can be, our attorney can be of a lot of help to us in this regard. That's it for me, for today.
Okay, thank you. You're busy. Tom?
So, since the last meeting, I did have several external committees, had Elizabeth City Chamber of Commerce met. Those guys are looking for, you know, ribbon cuttings and open houses to really start back. They've had a few vendors, or a few businesses reach out to them and say they want to start setting those up, so we'll start looking for those invitations in your, in your email coming forward. Also, did the economic development meeting on the seventeenth. I did not have an Elizabeth City downtown meeting, but that remains one of the most positive groups that I'm around in the month. I just love going to those meetings and hearing about all the different activities and projects that they have going on downtown, continuing to hear about investments in downtown businesses, people coming in, buying and investing in the buildings downtown, and opening up new spaces, it's really kind of exciting. And then, of course, we did have the county retreat. We did fill some of the spots, or I hope to fill, may have some candidates to fill some of the positions that I mentioned last meeting with the workforce development board. Hopefully, going to approve some of those later this week, so I appreciate you guys helping to get the word out for some of those, and that's all for today.
Okay, Jonathan?
Well, we went to the retreat and learned a lot, got up to date on a lot of different issues. I think the biggest thing that I saw, you know, I observed in the retreat was the debt and all of that. But where we were and where we are now, I think is very big, and I would like to thank our county manager and our county finance for, I think without them, we wouldn't be where we are now. I just, I learned a lot at those meetings, just had a water meeting, got to deal with some big projects going on there. Got an EMS, we can come in, so hopefully learn some things there, and just keep learning.
You don't have no right, thank you for participating.
And, Mr. Chairman, could I just step in and say it's all Sherry, I don't have any...
We told him that, oh, yeah.
And Jonathan, we have had a high twenty-six million dollar score.
I'll be brief, my wife's waiting for me to eat for our anniversary today. Y'all, y'all ain't pretty happy. Been here, that girl stuck with me for twenty-four years, and it's two hundred and eighty-eight months.
Two hundred and eighty-eight months, so how many minutes an hour?
A lot, I must have figured it all out this morning. Thanks for moving on the TDA board, changed the title of our meetings with perception anyway, it should help with smoother meeting movement forward. Had DSS board this morning, normal things there, looking forward to the Blunt House that Sparty told us about last meeting, utilizing that, it's going to be a huge asset for DSS with the cramped spaces they have, and I very much enjoyed the retreat, and we got a lot of things accomplished, and I appreciate everybody's work to make it happen. It's always a good, a good day, if things come where we need to be before we start moving budget.
Perry?
Three things. First, I attended JCPC meeting, which is a juvenile meeting with the teen court and so forth, virtual meeting. Health department had their discussion about our accomplishments, and we are actually one of the counties that is actually participating in the injection for the virus very well. I think we hit a lot of calories. What they have done, they have actually gone out in the community where people are not actually mobile with cars and so forth, and fascinated a lot of people in places that normally would not be, it would not be available to them, and I think that was a great thing. Since I've been here, when I came here tonight, someone passed to me two documents that is of great concern to our community, being in charge, well, the chairman of the special projects committee. Every year, we get recommendations from citizens involving dog hunting on their property when people are without permission, and sometimes it can get to be quite troubling for some of our citizens. So that's one of the things that I hope that our special products committee can address and sort of help just a little about trying to bring about some type of resolution that will help our citizens. The other thing that came before us this, before me when I came here, is the restructure of Pasadena County. You've probably heard me talk about the restructure of Pasadena County before, but I know that a lot of people in the county cannot actually, do not know exactly how we're structured to vote, but this document that we passed tonight, our attorney passed to me tonight, is really the explanation of how we got where we are with our voting. And I know that a lot of people don't understand, especially if you knew exactly what I'm talking about, but it is important that we know that that is something that is in contentious, especially in the black community, because only one of the districts that we vote in actually have more African Americans than whites, and we are forty percent of the population, approximately forty percent of the population, and forty-four percent of the population is not white, so we, that's one of the things that we need to really sort of clearly give an opportunity to more people of color to have an opportunity to be on this board. Mr. Jordan is great, he got through a vote of a, in that large position, where we know that all the three large positions will have more whites in it than African Americans, so the control is always white, all except the district that I'm in. So with the forty percent population, that's the other thing that I share, and I think it's something that we really need to talk about and get squared away, rather than having to go to Raleigh, or having lawyers and so forth involved, because I'm sure with the climate that we're in right now, we are going to end up with some type of litigation, so we need to talk about it so we do not have to do that. That's my report for the day.
Mr. Jordan, Tom?
I've attended several meetings, the, my first official EDC meeting, we had the jail board meeting, things are going pretty well at the jail. Fortunately, there's not been a large outbreak over there. They have been a few cases, but no real outbreak, and so they're doing well over there. We had the drainage committee meeting, and it's doing well there, a lot of work to be done, but we're moving on that. I got to visit the airport authority meeting also, and I believe several of us were at the opening of the new movie, which was pretty spectacular, the part that, the part that I saw, and it's great to have a first-class movie in our area right now, and I'm sure as the pandemic moves out, more people will be moving in to a movie, and that we'll all be looking forward to that. Today, I had an opportunity through Zoom to see ECSU and COA have a collaborative partnership agreement. They're working together, I think one of the, I think what is happening is that the people end up, they graduate from COA, and this agreement is going to give them an opportunity to flow right into Elizabeth City State University in order to get their four-year degree. And it's going to be, some of the areas that they're looking at is air science, social work, business administration, applied technology, economics, marketing, and I'm sure I missed some, and I kind of saved this for last, so that Commissioner Griffin could pitch in for the things that I've missed, but I think it's going to be a very good program for our community and show that the community college and the university are working very close together, and certainly this is going to help the students over there, and in turn is going to help our community very much. The last thing I'd say to be, that meal's on wheels, they're having a special week, March the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, and they're asking some of us to sign up. I've signed up, I'm not sure what I signed up for, but
Deliver meals?
Deliver meals, okay. I got, I got my answer, I'm going to deliver meals. But I look forward to going over and working with them, and that's it.
Very good. So, we all have our own responsibilities, and I asked Commissioner Jordan, Jordan Airport, just because of the economic, being on the EDC board, and just the activity there kind of linking two together, anyone else who participates in the meeting, we'd be glad to have you, so you can understand a little bit about the growth of the airport and the impact, economic impact and the workforce impact that it has. With that, the airport is moving along pretty well, as you've noticed that in the past couple weeks, the expansion area with taxiway runway is for future growth, and that area has been used for a COVID distribution center, it's been very positive. I think the first day was a little bit of pickup and some traffic blocking, consolidating road, and I think we worked through those difficulties. Last week, they used it again, and I think they used it again this week. Last week was second shot, this week is first shot. The health director has said that some of the, we've not been able to get all the shots that we've been asking for because other parts of the state are getting their allotments over us. However, anytime there's been a challenge with extra shots, our health director has asked for the shots, and he's been able to administer them in his Haight County region, which is very positive. Right now, I think we're at forty percent vaccinations on first shots, no, it's forty or fifty percent close on that, and I think we're about thirty percent on second shots. What is it?
Thirty for the second one was what the paper read the other day.
Right, so, I mean, it's very positive, you know, and so last week, when I was at the hospital meeting with Dr. Jackson and some staff members, they talked a little bit about the number of patients, and I mentioned this earlier, about those that, that have had the COVID virus, and the part that you really don't understand is the real warriors that are there with those patients every day, you know, trying to help the families through these difficult times, and just making the families comfortable, then this is where they lead you to home, so the hospital's very aware of those type of conditions the staff is going through, because some of the people, the longest person's been there for sixty days, and there's really not anything you can do except for ventilator and keep them comfortable. So the staff out there has talked about that, but in the past week or two, the number of cases has dropped dramatically since the November and Christmas holidays, which is very positive because a lot of those reimbursements, you know, it takes a little bit of time for the hospital to get those. Another thing that's happening on Holstead Boulevard is that this summer, at some point in time, there'll be a ribbon cutting for the hospital cancer center. That expansion is, I don't remember how big the facility is, but I think now they're working through their preliminary details and drawings with the city and their site planning right now, in which the county manager will be talking with them about the hospital, about the location of the new EMS facility that we proposed on our contracted landing, which we have, we're working with the hospital on expansion of our services. Another thing that this week, you know, last week, we did have a retreat, was very positive, everybody's able to understand the future, the budget, and what's going to happen with the county over the next one year, five years, adding to the ten years. Unfortunately, there will be some debt that has to be deferred to move forward with some of these projects, however, it does strengthen the position Pasadena County does have, not only for the quality of life of our citizens, but also for future economic development in those areas. The Zoom meetings, I don't know when they'll end, however, but I think our attorney continues to say, you know, the only way that we can continue to have a Zoom meeting is if we adopt the policy or the governor's executive order is rescinded. So right now, we can still do that, and I think it's going to be a policy decision on the board. I think it is very positive. We're like, Commissioner Stare, you know, he's home now, he can participate in the meeting, I'm like today, both Commissioner Jordan and myself, we participated in the virtual signing with Elizabeth City State and COA about their, their expanded growth and communications, their two years of associate's degree to a move into a four-year bachelor science degree or bachelor martial degree, so those have been positive, where the in-person meetings, you know, technology's changed, it's called a, the pandemic has, you know, has made people more aware of how it is. We're one of the, still the few counties and municipalities that actually have medium and allow people into their rooms. You know, we're very fortunate, we've been able, this courtroom, have our social distancing and maintaining and respecting each other's space on that. As I said earlier, there's not been any really recorded flu Um, as I said earlier, the pandemic really recorded flu, flu outbreaks this year, there might be one out in March, since I've made that statement, but it's been pretty positive, you know, the, the hospital, unfortunately, we had the COVID filled in the gap, but the number of people, you know, have been listening, and hopefully next year, we will have a big few outbreak here. The other thing is that, um, technology with the fiber, fiber optic and the satellite broadband communications, North Carolina is trying to, they had thirty million dollars, which was allotted through the COVID Cares Act, um, which a lot of that money has pushed, has been, three, two million were used locally in the Williamson area, there's thirty million, which is going to be used in other communities, however, that's going to be in a broadband, low satellite area, looking for providers such as Verizon, who's not interested in a USA, so there's other entities that are coming in, private partnership, partners, private public partnerships that are coming together and being able to look into the future of how they're going to provide this. Representative Bobby Hannick from Currytuck is engaged in this conversation, I think Howard Hunter's very engaged in it, which I represent how this community needs broadband. If you go to Hyde County, they have no, they have very poor quality internet service there, and so they were hoping they could get a grant to move their community forward, which would be positive for our region too. I think somebody said they had a 5G reception the other day in Hyde County, but it was off the cell phone, and power not at somebody's house, so. It's a busy month, I look forward to having others this month, thank the manager, we have a retreat, our joint meeting coming up in the month with the city, and, um, I think we hosted, so I think they'll call up the venue, and we'll call up an agenda.
In that order. In that order, venue first.
Venue first, that's what we said.
We have a venue already.
We got the venue, now, now they're going to, we have the venue, which will be in the same building we were in last week, the forum center, right? The order reserved, and then, um, the agenda will be. I don't think we have a closed session, but if there's any objection, we'll move forward. Um, please read, uh, Mr.
Winslow.
Mr. Winslow's notes, he makes some very valid points, um, actual funding in North Carolina and some of the laws that are on the books already. If there's not any other items to report, would be in relation to adjournments, we have some controls, we have a second, we have a second.